I now call the August 27, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Pro Tem Bazagian, council members Albrecht and Weintraub, as well as city staff. Councilmember Shapiro has an excused absence. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. Members of the public who need hearing assistance can request a device from the city clerk. I'd like to begin this evening with a pledge of allegiance and would ask Captain Carr if he would lead us.
Go ahead, Sam. Just right after your card. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have an agenda in front of us. Can I have a motion to approve that agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by councilmember Albrecht, seconded by councilmember Weintraub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Tonight, we have no presentations, so we're going to jump right into council announcements. And why don't we go ahead and start with councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have a couple of announcements, because it would be, excuse me, more on the environmental side. But as far as the Clean Power is concerned, I think there are some things that our general public needs to know as well. They have a Clean Power Alliance Energy Team, and it's available to help residents on choices they have with their electricity and to help reduce their monthly electricity bills. And there's been some recent changes. Federal tax phasing, federal tax laws are phasing out many of the energy-related tax credits. So stay tuned, because here they go. Tax credits, there's three of them. Tax credits for the purchase of new and used electric vehicles expire on September 30, Tax credits for energy-efficient homes upgraded such as heat pumps and insulators expire on December 31, again, of 2025. And tax credits for homeowners installing residential clean energy products such as solar, solar panels, solar water heaters. Our battery storage will also expire on December 31 of this year. So keep it in mind, because who knows what the future's going to be? So if you're planning on doing it, you're better off looking at it now. And I'm going to give you the telephone number for the Clean Energy Team, and they can assist you in any way. So that number is 866-319-4488. And they're very helpful, and I've spoken to them many times. I know they'll answer all of your questions. I was also very fortunate, as far as announcements are concerned, to be asked to participate with the California Wildlife Center in releasing an injured red-tailed hawk. And that was amazing. Bless you.
Thank you.
So we walked up a trail. This particular bird was seriously injured, and after about two or three months through intensive care, special diet, special training, they have a crew of at least 10 people that work there part-time, put them up, opened up the box, and within about five minutes, adjusted to the atmosphere and the landscape, and took off. It was pretty amazing, a red-tailed hawk. So I'd like to mention that all the costs of the California Wildlife Center, which doesn't really get the recognition or attention that it deserves in the city, it's a huge building, it's donor-supported, there's full-time people there, they serve at least 47 meals three times a day, or at least twice a day, to the animals, because they all eat something different. And it's an incredible experience, so hopefully you'll consider the announcements. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Weintraub?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge the tragedy that unfolded in Minnesota today. I just never want it to be taken as normal, that children go to school and don't come home. So I just wanted to acknowledge the horrific situation that happened there, and also just remind people that school shooters and shooters in general, they don't just wake up one morning and decide that they're going to do this. Most of the time, there's red flags out there, and just pay attention to what's going on in your community, your neighbors, your family, friends, and if there is an issue, make sure you report that, so that a tragedy like that does not, that these do not continue to happen. So I just wanted to make that, make that statement. Moving on to happier things, there are lots of new events being put on by our Community Services Department, and two in particular that I wanted to mention. There is a new Halloween event, a Beetlejuice Spooky Night, that's taking place October 11 at Creekside Park. And there is more information on our website, and registration is required in advance. And also, there is a, let's see, the latest event, where is it? I cannot, oh, Monte Carlo Night, for ages 50-plus, is taking place September 25 at the Community Center, and this is the Calabasas Senior Center's Monte Carlo Night, and that will be at the Community Center. So if you are interested, sign up is required for all of this, and you can do that at calabasasreg.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Bazagian?
My only announcement is to congratulate in advance the mayor, who will be featured tomorrow at the Mayor's Luncheon, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce at the Calabasas Country Club. We look forward to being there to support you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that announcement, and for those of you that are wondering, the event sold out, so they added more tables. And then it sold out again. So if you want to go, you're too late. Couple of more announcements, though. We do have our Calabasas Film Festival is coming up, September 17 to the 21st. You can find some information about that at calabassasfilmfestival.com. I think the lineup of films and schedules are still being finalized, so keep an eye on that. Probably in the next week or so, you'll see the final dates and times, but don't wait too long to get those tickets. These things sell out. The other thing that's coming up in September, the end of September, we have our 5K Run-Walk for the Heroes of Childhood Cancer. You can find information about that on our website, thecityofcalabasus.com, or you can go to somethingyellow.org/5k to register and to find more about this very worthy cause. Those are the only announcements that I had for this evening, so I'll take one more moment before we head into our regular public comments. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce the new captain of the Lost Hills Sheriff Station, Captain Carr, and I'd like to invite you to come up and introduce yourself and tell us anything you want us to know about you and the Lost Hills Station. Welcome to Calabasas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and members of the city of Calabasas. I'm truly humbled to be chosen as your new captain. This is a dream command. You know, anybody would be, you know, it's definitely a highlight of any captain's career, especially here in Lost Hills. I did my first ride-along for the academy at Lost Hills Station before I, when I was an applicant. And, you know, I, at the time, you know, I had worked in the city of Agoura Hills, and as time went on, I circled back and came right back here as a lieutenant. So I've been your operations lieutenant for the last three years, serving under Captain C2, and a year before that as a watch commander. But I am, like I said, truly humbled and proud of the station, proud of the communities here. Everybody has just been truly first class, and I hope to serve you well in the years to come. You know, my goals are just to, you know, be responsive, to be present, to listen to your concerns, and, you know, and to work together to solve the community's concerns. You know, I try not to make, you know, pie-in-the-sky promises, try to keep things realistic, but honest, and, you know, again, you know, I had my family out at National Night Out, and everyone was just so wonderful and welcoming, and it's truly just, you know, a testament to this city. And, and I, you know, I'm a father of four girls, a proud husband. I'm, you know, I couldn't be, you know, I'm a very fortunate person in this life, and I always never forget to count my blessings. So again, I won't take up too much of your time, but I just wanted to say thank you, thank you to everybody, and if, at any time I can be of assistance, you let me know. But like I said, I want to be present, responsive, and hopefully solve, you know, you know, the issues that are going on in the city as they come up. And again, thank you very much. I don't write speeches, so, yeah, but again, I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for joining us, both at the Lost Hills Sheriff Station and here tonight, so it's a pleasure to have you. At this time, we're going to open the floor for general public comments for items not on the agenda. Each speaker will be asked to state their name and city that they live in, and will be allowed three minutes to address the city council on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. The council is unable to respond due to state law, which prohibits the council from addressing any issues not on the agenda, but we have our city staff here, and we are listening. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Just number seven.
No. And number four. So we'll go ahead and take those in numerical order. Number three, number four, and number seven. We'll begin with number three. Was that councilmember Albrecht or councilmember Weintraub for number three?
Ed.
Ed, if you'd like to lead us off.
The reason I pulled this, it's not so much because I have questions. I did meet with Ron on many occasions, this week included, but I wanted to comment on the program that it put into place, and that is with Mission Square. And being, this is my business, and I've been in this business of investment planning for over 25 years, I wanted to compliment the choices that were made. I know you've had that, this program with Mission Square, but it's also formerly known as ICMA, and it's been around a long time, but they have improved themselves over the year to the nth degree, as far as financial planning, as far as education, helping their clients with risk management. Their website is amazing. They serve the public in large part. They also take other entities now a little bit, but they are a public service entity, and I couldn't be happier, and just want to reassure that another set of eyes have looked at it, who's in the business, and admire them. So thank you very much.
Okay. Any other further comments on number three? No? Okay. Moving on to item number four, then. Item number four is a professional services agreement amendment, number two, with square And it looks like Erica Green is joining us here. Thank you. I see that this is an amendment to add, is it, I understand it to be 80,000?
It is amendment number two to add 30,000.
To add 30,000?
Yes. It was at 60. This amendment would add 30.
And I didn't quite see in the, in all the attachments, and maybe it's there, and I didn't understand, that I saw a contract for 11,000, or a proposal for 11,000. I see the notation of 90,000 in the amendment. Could you walk us through what the initial contract was?
Sure.
And what the amount of the changes are at this point?
Sure. So the initial contract was for 10,000, and then we had amended it to 60, to do the bronze monument plaques, to add all of the park renovations. And to keep consistent with those signage, we added the 30,000 to do the signs at Tennis and Swim, and some of our municipal code signs at our parks and facilities.
Okay. And if this was a $90,000 contract out of the gate, what would the procedure be for that? Would we be competitively bidding that? And because this started as a $10,000 contract, how do we approach this contract?
Right. Yes, it would be a competitive bid if we went 90,000 out of the gate. I think the reason why we amended it is to keep brand consistency. We also, because we've used this vendor before, had given us a discount on these, on these signs that we're planning to put in, so that is the reason for the amendment.
Okay. And I certainly understand the brand consistency. It does make sense. We do need signage to match.
Sure.
However, I am really concerned about a $10,000 contract with a 700, 800% change order. In my experience, you know, contracts with a 10% change order is, you know, anticipated.
Sure.
Things don't always go according to plan.
Sure.
But when we start a project off as a $10,000 job, and it turns into a $90,000 job, I am concerned that we are skipping out on the oversight that we should be providing. Is there any way that this could have been anticipated at the time? Is there, is there a schedule reason why we have to move forward so quickly?
We would like to install the new municipal code signs and update the signs at Tennis and Swim with the new logo as soon as possible. I completely understand the, the formal bid process. I think at the original, when we got this contract, we did not know the cost of the bronze signs that we were going to do in so many projects within that year, so I think that's what really just pushed it, that Second Amendment. Or we would have gone to bid with over a $60,000 contract, for sure.
Okay. City manager intended to add? No? Okay. All right. Any other comments on number four? Okay. How about number seven?
I wanted to pull this item, just because we received councilmember Shapiro's email, and since he can't be here this evening, I just thought that if Kendon wanted to address some of the questions in that email, and then...
What email? Was there an email?
There was, there was an email.
Just this afternoon? Oh, must have missed it.
And then if the budget subcommittee had anything to weigh in on.
Yeah, so I'll start out, and then I'll have Mike Dyer jump in as well. So what this is, is this is an expenditure plan. This is not indicating that all funds will be spent on these projects necessarily. And let me explain why. So we, this is the third iteration of the expenditure plan. Two have already been approved by council, and as we've come forward each subsequent time, we've amended it, presented that to council. Some of the reasons that we change it is, for example, it's our intent and always our effort to go after grant money, to offset Woolsey Fund or other fund costs from the General Fund. So for example, originally on this plan was the EOC trailer and the lightning truck to pull that. We were generously awarded funds from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, so we took that off, and then added some other projects. We also had on there some funding for Epic and also for Firewise. Again, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy helped fund Epic through one of their grants, and so as we've done that, we've been able to replace things. So what you see here is ideas from staff, as we'd like to move forward on allocating those funds. Now, again, we will spend every effort we can to look for grants. In fact, one of the big items on this expenditure plan are generators for the city hall, and then also for the community center. Chief Dyer was just in the process, working with our new grant-writing consultant, California Consulting, to go after funds for two generators, and was actually very far along in the process until when we had to pull out. And the reason we pulled out is there was, the grant was so oversubscribed by the number of applications that went in, is that they've made a priority now for hospitals and...
Fire stations, police stations, and hospitals only. So they, they create the, the process to, those three facilities get the most points. City halls with EOCs are treated like a gas station. So we, we had to pull out, because we didn't have, they call it a benefit-cost analysis.
So this doesn't mean that we're going to go out tomorrow and start purchasing a generator with these funds. We're going to continue looking for grant funds to purchase generators, but this is in the plan. In the event that we don't, we would come back to council and request to move forward. Now, in regards to councilmember Shapiro's comment, his concern was also with the price tag of the cameras. And so if you look in there, this is an opportunity that staff has been exploring to update cameras at all of our city facilities, except for the community center, which has the most up-to-date cameras right now, because it's our newest remodeled facility. And so that would be city hall, Tennis and Swim Center, parks, other facilities, including traffic cameras. And these cameras would be tied in with a real-time watch center at the sheriff's station. They would serve both a public safety need, also used in, in terms of for fires, for evacuations and others, so that we figure that nexus. Again, if the council does not want to include that item on the Woolsey Fire Expenditure Plan, then we would come back and look at that as possible, coming from General Fund reserves or capital funds in the future, if that's the council's desire.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Ed?
Well, upon reading this, I think I have a little different take on it. I happen to like it very, very much, and I'll tell you why. It's not so much that we're going to be spending all the money. I think it's more of a placeholder. We're going to determine what we need and priority. Priorities change. We have an emergency that's not on here, that'll get treated from here. So it's a good talking point. We have to have goals, and I think we needed to establish them in a perfect world, and this is a good document to, to launch that from. And even getting into the little innuendos, like the Public Works issues, this is where they're located, and why are they located there, and if they're located somewhere else, is it more money, but safer? There's a lot of aspects to this, but I like seeing a table of contents, essentially, that will move at our own pace, when it's appropriate. That's my comment.
Okay. Any other comments? I'll weigh in on that as well, then, if I can. I noticed that under the program, these are all categorized as either emergency preparedness, disaster preparedness, communications, workplace safety. These are all things that I think are appropriate for the Woolsey Fire Funds to address, and certainly we, we need to use those funds towards the purpose that they were intended for. I would take councilmember Shapiro's comment to heart, though, which is that we should be seeking grants. We have a, we have a lobbyist/grant writer, whose job is to identify those things out there, and this is probably an area that we can find more money in, and we should be vigorously looking for that money, but I don't think we should be waiting for that money and putting these programs on hold. These are all essential items that we've all talked about, especially cameras around our civic center. If we can't find money elsewhere, we do need to get going on that, so I am in support of this item. Okay. Before we vote on these items, I would like to ask that item number four be voted on separately, because I suspect that I might not be aligned with some of my other council members in the way that I'm voting on that. I'll be blunt, I'm not in favor of that. I can't approve a change order process like that. We'll see if anybody agrees with me or not. So item number four, we'll do separately. Does anybody else want to vote separately, or shall we take a motion for approval of items one through three and five through seven?
Could I just have a quick question on item four?
Sure.
What, what is the language we're using on these signs?
For the tennis and swim signs, it's all the wayfinding signs, tennis court signs, all of those things. For the parks and facilities, it's the municipal code signs, and we're updating and getting consistent signs across the board there.
So none of these are like historical markers or anything?
No, no, no.
Okay. That was it.
Okay. So taking item number four separately, I'd like to entertain a motion from items number one, two, three, five, six, and seven?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved by councilmember Bazagian, seconded by councilmember Weintraub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And for item number four, professional services agreement amendment number two, all those in favor?
Well, I'll make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, I need to do that. Can I get a motion to approve this item?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Moved by councilmember Bazagian. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Albrecht. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Motion carries three one. Now we move on to our public hearings. We have none, so we'll move on to our continued business. We have none. So we're moving on to new business, the Voting Delegates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And is there anybody presenting this evening?
That's me.
All right.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, I'm pleased to provide a brief report for the appointment of a voting delegate for the Cal Cities General Assembly. As you know, Cal Cities holds an annual conference at which member cities debate and vote on league policy proposals and issues of importance. The current liaison appointments for Cal City are the mayor and mayor pro tem, but alternative delegates may be selected, depending on councilmember availability to attend the conference. While no resolutions were submitted for consideration by the league's deadline, it's recommended a primary delegate and up to two alternate delegates be selected in the event items are submitted prior to the conference in October. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we do need a, a delegate and up to two alternates. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Well, you're not going, so...
So I will not be in attendance? I'm not sure who else is attending?
Who's going?
I'm not sure yet.
This is going to be on the last day, though, right? What day are they putting it on this year?
Are you attending the league, councilmember Albrecht?
It is. It's the last day. It's Friday, October 10.
I was maybe, but I was considering being an alternate, but if necessary, I'm there to serve, and if we need to have somebody there, I'll consider it.
I have to be there for the whole convention, so...
Do you have the bandwidth to also serve as our delegate?
I can, if you want me to.
Okay. Well, I think, I'd like to make a motion, then, that Mayor Pro Tem Bazagian be our delegate, and that councilmember Albrecht and Shapiro be our two... and that council member Albert and Shapiro be our two alternates?
I can be in the next level down.
The next alternate? I'm not sure if council member Shapiro is going, I believe. Is that correct?
But it's Friday. A lot of people aren't staying the whole thing, so...
I just wasn't sure about the Friday part. It's October 10th.
Council member Weintraub, would you like to be our second alternate?
What does that actually mean? Well, do we need two alternates?
I'll, I have to be there the whole convention.
That means if James gets hit by a bus and Ed wins the lottery, you'll be voting.
If James got hit by a bus, we have bigger issues. Fine. Okay.
Just so that we can have the maximum number of names on there?
Fine.
Okay, so that would be mayor Protem Bazagian as our delegate, council member Albert as our first alternate, council member Weintraub as our second alternate. Can I get a second to my motion?
Second.
Seconded by council member Weintraub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And council member Shapiro is off the hook. All right, verbal reports. Council, who has something to report? We'll begin with council member Weintraub.
Let's see. We had our cog meeting last week. And we also had a meeting with SCE to address the continued outages impacting Calabasas. Just last week, we had three outages, three or four, three, I think, at this point. One, they claimed was from lightning that we never had in our community. And two were for unknown sources, could be branches, wildlife, getting into things. But the service that we're getting continues to be completely inaccessible. We have a great new representative from Edison. So I do want to acknowledge Stephanie, who's really showing a great commitment to understanding our issues and trying to help us the best way that she can. I've also reached out to Supervisor Horvath, State Senator Ben Allen, and Assembly Member Irwin, and have really stressed that I do not believe that any other cities had three outages last week for these ridiculous reasons. And I've said to all of them that we need their help on this issue. We can't do it alone. They recommended that it becomes a cog issue, but the only problem with that is the other cog cities aren't having the same issues. They're willing to support us, but there's something with the infrastructure in Calabasas that is going out more frequently than any of the other cities around. I guess Cam Rio recently had an outage, but it was, it was rare that it happened there. That was like the only one. So it's just really important that our residents continue to reach out to Edison, reach out to the county and the state, and express their dissatisfaction with the amount of outages. And we're continuing to advocate as well.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes, I would say that earlier today, I gave a PowerPoint presentation on Proposition 50 to the California Contract Cities Association by Zoom. It was actually, I didn't use the PowerPoint, but I will be using it next week when I give an in-person presentation to them. And of course, since our last meeting, Proposition 50 has been put on the ballot involving California redistricting.
Council member Albert?
No reportable announcements at this time. I'm going to be busy as heck in September. So we've got a retreat for Clean Power and Finance Board meetings, and you'll be hearing from me.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And I just want to report that on the 18th, I attended the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy meeting. And a lot of great things are happening at that level, as always. And I want to give a special shout out and thank you to our Community Services Department for the fabulous End of Summer Concert that we had last weekend. My favorite Bob Seeger, represented by a great band playing a set they call Turn the Page. So for all of you that joined us, glad you were able to. I've also had a few meetings myself with the city manager regarding, you know, future financial issues of the city, doing a little long-range planning. And also reviewing bids for our proposals for our site infrastructure project, the citywide solar initiative that would cover all sorts of energy efficiency items, help us with our infrastructure. And all of this will be announced very shortly here. Very exciting stuff. Look forward to sharing with that with you once those contracts are agreed upon.
One more announcement. I can't go anywhere without people complaining about the school area traffic. I'm sure everyone's getting those complaints. Someone today complained that it took them 40 minutes to go from Eddingham and Mulholland to AC Stella. So it's really, really bad out there. But it's, people are parking illegally, doing horrible things on Mulholland Highway. So I'm asking everyone, leave earlier, come later, but please, please, follow the rules of the road, because it's just making it extra unbearable for people trying to navigate their way on Mulholland Highway. So I'm hoping that we could get extra enforcement out there at pickup and drop off and at lunchtime, when kids are rushing back to school. But right now, it's a really difficult situation. And it's like that every time at the beginning of the school year. But there's something about this year that just seems even elevated even more. So any help we can get on that.
Okay, I have one more announcement then. And we can't have a discussion here at the dais, so this is completely unrelated to council member Weintraub's item. I'm having lunch with our new captain here in a couple of weeks, and he asked me what we wanted to talk about. And I told him it'd be great to talk about our motor deputy and picking the hours and locations that he'd be enforcing, in particular, around our schools to enforce the no-left turns and such. But that's just coincidental.
Great.
More details on that after I've had the opportunity to speak with our captain. But he seems certainly on board with helping us solve these problems. City manager, do you have anything to report?
I do, mayor. Just a couple of items for the council and also for the community. Erica Green sent an email to the council and mentioned recently the new program for seniors that is at the community center. This is through United Health. It's similar to our Silver Sneakers. And so we encourage those who might have the opportunity to participate in that. It's a great option for lower cost and being able to recreate and participate in our programs. And then second, I want to just share that we've implemented a new public records request, software management portal. It's a Next Request. It's actually something we've been working on for a few months and it went live just recently. And the system is one of the benefits, some of the benefits are it streamlines the public records request, also creates additional transparency. But I'm not sure if the council is aware, we receive over 500 public records requests a year. And so up until this point, it's been very staff-heavy and staff-involved. And this will streamline that significantly as those public records requests are distributed out to the right departments and then monitored through the software to make sure that those are coming in. So I just wanted to show that.
Okay, try as we might to drag this on. It's 7:35, and we have reached the end of our agenda. So we are going to now adjourn to the next regular meeting of the city council, which will be held on September 10th, 2025.